So I called them. They're a little short. I'm calling them. I was...
It was Monday.
And she said something they have to call me back. I know it's actually Thursday. I forgot to say thank you.
Well, that's because you went forward.
I'm at the time. You know, because I'm... Three hours. I can't be there. That was... That was 12:00.
We got to see it.
Yeah.
I don't know what for.
I'm not going to explain.
Oh, she's on the way next to you.
Yeah.
Oh, she's saying we have to send... The first...
Okay, sir.
All right. Not mine. It was the same thing, right? No. I got it. I think... All this is for those...
I gave it to... Can I mail it out? I did mail it.
I did most of them. The thing I got mailed is... It should be... It should be... Should have been car wash and signed. It's a western...
But maybe it was... She kept up the passion. She mailed it early.
Oh, she was...
On the right hand.
I don't know.
Okay, we all set? It's seven o'clock. Welcome everyone to the planning board October 4th. Would you join our pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance?
To the United States of America, to the republic which stands on nation, on God, in this world, liberty, justice, law.
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Kishan? Mr. Darnina? Mr. Tocso? Mr. Malta? Mr. Mixel? Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Artuso? Mr. Tenen?
Here.
Okay. This is the record. If anyone was here for the Wolf Day Resort at 10:85 Grand Ole Road, then applications would now back the table against the future meeting. We actually do October 18th.
Does anyone want to move the table?
No. They just... Okay. Mark, Mark, we get started. Go ahead with the first one then.
Okay. First scheduled matter in tonight's agenda is at 10:13 Ridge Road Splash Car Wash located at the same address the applicant. Splash Car Wash is requesting final site plan and subdivision approval associated with the construction of a 7,000 square foot car wash facility on a combined 2.16 acre parcel located in an MC medium intensity commercial district under section 228.8 of the code of the town of Webster.
Yes, sir.
Hello and good evening. My name is Ed Mark. I'm an engineer with DDS. And so in attendance this evening is Dave Clements, owner-operator Splash Car Wash and Jeff Liddo with Project Architect. Now, the board will recall when we last presented September 6th, you gave us some feedback. And I'll just briefly touch on those items, which I trust you've had an opportunity to review our submission package. And that includes increased landscaping, particularly along the northern boundary and west of the proposed building. A rendering showing the landscaping, color rendering, that's in your packet and displayed up here as well. One more detail on signage. We do provide that on the site plan. We asked for removal of the curb cut immediately south of 104. And it looks like we have a little more work to do on that, but we're on the right path for that. And then lastly, to check the lighting plan, that it conforms with the code and also to provide more details, all of which we provided in the packets. We have consulted the town staff and believe we've addressed all the planning issues. We have a couple of minor detailed issues to work out, but nothing I don't think we can overcome with your staff. And so we're here tonight asking that you grant final approval on this.
Yeah, one of the things we did ask was the landscaping. And you did put some landscaping there. But how... Are they berms? What are you doing with that? Is that just... Listen, you're just that dark.
We do have berms. And if you look at the grading plan, you'll see some... So you'll... I'm sure you're familiar with the area. There are little islands out there now, much like what's in front of Wendy's. So we've augmented those and extended those berms east and west so it's more of a continuous one, similar to what Marina has.
Yeah, that was...
You referred us to those. We increased the quantity quite a bit, especially if you compare us to the Wendy's site. We have several more plantings there. We also added plantings west of the building. We did a lot of larger, taller evergreens there and some other plantings throughout the site.
All right. You know, before I forget this one issue, before I get into anything else, there was a gentleman who sent a letter and I neglected to read it into the record the last time. His concern was he drives a bus with people, elderly people, and over to the eye doctor. I could just bear to believe that. I'll read it. Just take me a second. He... I work as a bus driver for a local agency and drive a 15-passenger bus. Currently, when I drop people off at the Ocu site, which is located next to the Splash Car Wash proposal, I pull into the near... The rear entrance of Ocu site from Shoe Craft Road and drop people off in the outer road because the drop-off area clearance underneath is too low for buses to pull into. In order to leave without backing the bus up, I pull out through the road connecting to Wendy's, which appears to be going away in this proposal. In order to have a safe exit from Ocu site, I suggest an exit road still exists past Splash Car Wash for the bus to turn around. And we put it in near Ridge Road to allow buses to turn without having to back up into the Ocu site parking lot. The Ocu site is a whole separate operation in this one area. There's no connection to it.
Correct.
I did go over there and mentioned it to Josh at a PRC meeting. I went over and took a look at it. And I actually drove in. And if he comes in the way he says, and if he's listening, I'm sure he is, drives in off of Shoe Craft, comes in, drops his passengers off, he can continue forward, which would be going north towards Ridge Road. There's another parking lot on the side of the building there at Ocu site. He can pull up in a huge blacktop area, which would be no problem, in my opinion, for him to turn around.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Oh. Geez, I don't get it. Yeah. No, I thought he had plenty of room there to make the turnaround, Joe. So I think that's a way for him without putting another exit or...
Do you mean on his site? Or do you... Because we can't...
No, it's on Ocu site.
Yeah, I was going to say because we can't afford to have...
No.
Their traffic coming in hard. You can appreciate the...
Yeah. He's going to take the roadway in.
Exactly.
When he drops them off, just continue forward towards Ridge Road again. Still going there.
Yep.
And then when he gets up there, there's plenty of room to make a turn. Huge area.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understand me there.
Yeah. So I don't think this really impacts your proposal at all. But I just wanted to make sure I got this thing into the record. And I think that was all in there. Landscaping was an issue. What else did we have? Anything else that was concerning?
Signage.
Signage. Well, signage, my thing. The signage, we talked about that at PRC. I was looking at it. You got several signs there.
We don't want any confusion.
Yeah. Okay. But once I'm in there, I know I'm in the car wash, right? Do I need to have splash on top of every one of those? How about that? You're in the car wash. You know you're in the car wash. You don't need splash. I don't know, that's kind of splashy.
You want to speak to that? He's talking about the signage portion and eliminating the word splash.
Just take the top off of these things. You got a bunch of them.
Directional signs.
Quite honestly, the planning, our guidelines, the design guidelines for planning for Webster's actually eliminates a lot of logo-type stuff on gas stations and whatever.
Are you referring to this one?
I'm referring to these here signs up there.
The wayfinding signs.
That's what I'm asking about. Wayfinding?
Yes.
I'm not wayfinding...
Oh, not your road sign.
Okay.
No, no, no. That's right.
These signs. These signs.
That's it.
Can you use the mic and say your name, please?
I'm sorry. David Clements, principal with Splash Car Wash. Yeah, I was just trying to discern which signs we're talking about.
Yeah.
The wayfinding signs are... How many in the packet that you're pulling up there?
One, two, three, four, six? Six signs? These six.
Yeah, those are the ones I have, right? Yeah, these should just be directional signs. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I don't have any issues with conceding those branded signs for directional signs or internal movements as long as we maintaining the identity of our brand.
Yeah, your road sign, your monument sign, that's mine.
And maybe if we could get just the two that meets the public right away. Or the access road is so that patrons enter and exit are kind of a reminder of their brand as they enter and exit. We're conceding those.
Now, I don't know how... I don't think you're going to miss it. You need a variance to get these many signs out there?
No, because technically they're getting the sign package approved as a part of the site plan approval. The board has the discretion to determine the number of signs.
All right. Where's this discretion at? Yeah, if you can eliminate that, you know, the car wash. You've got an exit, entrance, directional, incident one.
How about we keep enter, exit as branded and everything internally without the brand?
Say it again?
So where are you from? Into the site from David, you would want the splash logo, but anywhere else?
Oh, okay. It's up for each space. Just eliminate some of the...
Sure.
I mean, once you go in, you pretty much know you're in the car wash, though. Whatever you guys think. Go ahead.
I don't think you need it.
Huh?
I don't think you need them. I think you just need the enter, exit. You have that giant thing on the building that you're going to see and know.
Should we keep it simple?
Keep it simple.
What is the monument sign? I'm starting from...
Jeff, do you know the monument?
Yeah. Where is that? I don't even know. It's on... Are you putting that up by the entrance or...
The intention was to be up by the... Oh, yeah. It's number three in the northwest corner. If you look at the site plan, site plan three is this splash monument sign right to the northwest corner. Very close to the entrance off there as well.
I got you. All right. Let's see what it means.
Is that going to cover up the Wendy's sign?
Still goes there.
So just to the right of the Wendy's one?
Yeah, it goes to the right. Oh, I guess... So it's number three. All right. Yeah, you're still within your property. So we have... I see where you are.
If it's a consensus of the board, we'd like to have our brand on at least the enter, exit on the bridge or on the road. But if it's a consensus that they know it's a car wash as they approach it, then we can see that.
Okay, so let's take the one first of all. That, your number three, that's your main monument sign.
Correct.
How far off is it?
He's... You're under their property.
We're under their property. Well, no, your right wing is... You're probably four or five feet inside of the property line.
Yeah, we're going to need to adjust that because it is proposed to be located right over Sanitaris Super Main.
So we're within the easement, but we're not over the main itself. Be careful about that location.
Okay. Well, if it's in an easement, then it's going to need town board approval. I would suggest just moving it.
Okay. Sure.
Okay. And we're referring to the monument signs. You just go use number three.
Yes.
All right. And the other signs are...
Wait a minute. Just the monument sign. Okay. The white... All the letters in white are going to be eliminated, right?
Yes.
The word splash.
Yes.
The word car wash. It's... The only thing is going to be eliminated, right?
Correct.
Not the blue?
No.
Yeah, you can just design it by the way the code says.
I was going to say I think your code doesn't allow anything but the letter to be...
Correct. That's right. Just any figures, no words up. You do have an address on it. Yeah, you have an address on it. So it's just going to... All right. So now we got that result. Look at the other ones. What we got? How many?
There's eight other signs.
All right. You guys want to move that? Now we're on the signs on the building, right? Yeah, there's one, I think, on the... Yeah.
For the ones... For the callback of monument signs? Before the wall of the building? You have... No, I said not the monument sign. The directional signs is what I'm on. You said you wanted just the enter and exit signs to have the logo? Yes?
Yeah, I was asking that all of our patrons enter here, exit here. And typically, we pass her by. We just like to have our brand recognized. We like to have our brand recognized. It's just a reminder on their way to the house. This is a reinforcement of our brand. That's why we brand them. Internally, they don't, to your point, Mr. Chairman, they don't really serve any purpose other than direction and information.
So it's four signs in total that would have the logo? Four out of the eight? Because there's three different enter signs. Like the... Not that you... You're not talking about the exit only or the exit or the exit vacuums? Just the ones that are enter and exit only?
That's what I was referring to. Yes.
Okay. So there's four of those in total? Because it looks like you have... Is it three?
Yeah, there are four along the southern boundary there. Close to the intersection that leads for the road that goes out to Ridge Road. And then the other three are in our southeast corner.
I just want to make sure that everybody on the board is clear it's not just two, one enter, one exit. It's four of the eight signs that will have the logo on them?
The signs six, seven, eight, nine.
Yeah.
We need three enters.
Two enters and two exits. Okay.
If they're worried about... I just hope that... Knowing that it's an exit. The intention of the two exits is just that people know coming from either direction that that's an exit. That's why we want to double base there just for everybody passing by to know it's an exit. Enter is the same concept, but the one... The one enter sign is redone in both sides. I'll have to see if you can see that. Probably not. Just to be... Just want to make clear the double lane exit is exit only. You know, that's... I want it to be crystal clear for the car wash patrons. So you don't want cars underway in trying to turn into that lane?
I don't know. I guess where I was going with that is there's eight signs here, I guess. I think there's eight signs and four of them are going to have the logo. Four aren't going to make a difference for four of them to not have the logo.
Yeah. Yeah, the idea is to minimize the... Number one, the size of it and something that isn't necessary on a sign. You know, if there's an exit sign, that's it. You don't need car wash on top of it. Same with the enter or the directional. This isn't new for us here. This is pretty much written in our guidelines. We're trying to kind of stay consistent with that.
Just looking at the way you're drawing the map here, does the sign say the exit sign on the six? Is that... So the face of the sign is towards the road or towards... Should be towards the road.
Some of these... I see that that's the same.
Correct. They'd be perpendicular to travel of the existing road, of the existing roadway by so that either direction would agree it. In this case, east and west. No. So we want cars that are eastbound on the existing road that's out there today to see that sign and not try to turn into that lane and go to the next set of signs where it says enter.
The westbound one, the only traffic from that could pull through the exit office?
That's what I say. That one may be redundant.
In some respects, the ones we redone and are revealing, signs seven and eight.
True.
So you could have just had a six and nine and splash on the arrows.
The only thing I was trying to express earlier is that you proximity to the two exits are more important than two enters.
Well, you still have the door.
Correct.
The exit's... It's a little important.
True. It's a question. We're just trying to, you know, the intention here is to try to get more than we need is to try to be crystal clear on what the circulation is to be without confusion by the public. Whether or not it has a splash logo over it, I truly appreciate that. It's not necessary by the standards of the town. It's desired by the... I'll realize that.
So...
Six and eight, six and nine.
Yeah, six and nine. Six and eight is...
Appreciate that.
Oh, no, actually, you're right. Six and nine, because then you go in and be on your right all the time.
I was just trying to get clarity in what signs would have it and which ones would not and where they would be located. So that's then... Just trying to get across. And then the other part about if half the signs have it, half don't, it sounds like there's a strong...
Derek, you're saying seven and eight, right? Eliminate it.
Well, I eliminate the splash logo. The exit only would be necessary.
Yes. If our standards are not to have a logo, why are we talking about a logo?
Yeah, that's...
I understand that they'd like it. I would like it too. But if our standard, I want that.
Well, that's according to the guidelines. That's more of the...
Has it been in there?
And maybe I misunderstood, but I thought I heard that we were okay having the logo on the enter and exit and not the other signs. Did I not hear that correctly?
No, that's what we're talking about. When we have just two of those four signs?
Yes.
So what are you saying?
This is... Okay. So you've got six, seven, and eight and nine. Eight and nine, you only need one of those, in my opinion. If that's an entrance, number nine is a... The... What sign is the monument?
I could see where it could get confused if they didn't have a logo on one of the entrance signs. Because the Ocu site is kind of... I mean, you could make a wrong decision. Possible. Struck that.
See, and yet...
You're going to figure out requests if you get it wrong.
These signs... This place is going to glow at night because these are all lit too.
Yeah.
These aren't just panels. So you're going to have these things lit up. The goal is to minimize it. All right. Come up with a decision, you guys.
The local one, the enter and exit sign.
Forget the logo. Those are... We're just going to... We just got to put signs. We can't put all this stuff on there. This is... You guys got to... So we're going to have an exit, entrance, directional.
The logo one, right?
Without the logos. Okay, so that's that. Now, moving on. Where are we putting what signs? Six or seven or both of them?
For the exit only, we would need six and seven.
Okay, so six and seven are there.
To reiterate.
Okay. And eight and nine?
One or...
Either... Either or, okay. Whichever one works best for you fellows?
I think it's best to drop number eight.
Number eight? You have number nine on your right side that go again. I agree. Okay. So you got nine?
Because they do have number five off. But it's one of the...
Seven. Now, the plus side of this, by doing this also, I mean, letting them have these extra ones on it. With the car wash, the top minimizes about half the size of the sign. So that's a figure we have to do in the...
Where... Where it is and what it's going to be.
And we've done this with McDonald's and Burger King and all these places. They've all come with, you know, big signs that go everywhere for... Like you don't know where you're going to go to the drive-up. There's 15 signs, you know, directing you around. All right. You good with this?
Yeah.
So they've got six and seven and nine of the entrance and exit there. Okay?
Five is just something you're turning this way, so?
Yeah. I don't have an issue with that so much. Monument sign is okay?
And no signs, no logo. Eliminating any, no signs, no logo.
Yeah. Car wash sign, strictly the red sign. Exit, enter, directional. And you've got vacuum sign. That's okay. The signage is okay, just eliminating the oval design on top of the sign. Okay?
To be clear, the shape of the sign is okay without the logo?
What's that?
Is the shape of the sign...
No, I would just use just the... Just the sign. You don't need that up there.
Rectangle?
The goal was to minimize the size of these things.
That's very good. Thank you.
Just keeping down to a simple sign. I mean, that would serve no purpose on there anyways other than just...
It doesn't make a difference if it's a rectangle or it's a straw. It's a... Doesn't matter if it's a round or square.
Let's see. What else did we have in there? Anything else? Josh, I think you've got a few here. The pillars?
Yeah, there's a few remaining outstanding engineering...
Yeah, that's all we've arranged there. How many are perfect?
We can work with them. We just want comments.
Josh, what about the sewer department? The applicant will need to complete an industrial chemical survey and return it to the sewer department.
Yeah, but I have to address this.
We actually have a sign... I can leave it to you. I've actually got a sign one share from the sewer department.
Sure. Did you have any issue with the other comment from the sewer about capping it to the existing?
None at all. So to be clear, your sewer superintendent asked if we utilized an existing Y in some good shape. Record mapping did reveal where that is. So we would want to find out where that is and see if it works foundation-wise. But he said if it doesn't work, we simply have to cap it, which, quite honestly, it should already be capped. But we're happy to comply with that.
And you've seen a copy of, here, see, comments here?
I did, yeah.
Nothing that you can't take care of?
Nothing at all.
All right. And fold it up. All right, um. Yeah, preliminary, we really didn't have, other than the landscaping, there was nothing really.
There was adding the extra brick to the, from, like, the side of the building, they brought the samples.
They did design that, yeah.
Yep, and then it looks good.
This is just to do the project, or is that?
Yeah, we, uh. We have elevation on that. We basically duplicated, we duplicated the entrance and the exit, so they're the same.
Uh huh.
This is sort of the palette, and these are actual, proposed finishes, the primary one being, uh, the stone, the stone, blueish.
No, I think, I think the building, as far as the building, it's nice, actually, it's very attractive, you know, but. The signs, then that's another story.
They're gonna look good.
No, no, you've done a great job, you know. Um, anybody, anything else, it's not a public hearing, is there anybody here that, what, okay, it's not a public hearing, but if you want to comment?
I'm, I'm new to Webster, so I don't know.
How, how, just give us your name.
Oh, all right, sure. Can't figure things out? I'm Mike Byrne, I live at fourteen eighty-six Grand Meadows, uh, I drive, and I, I don't know where I'm supposed to present this, because I drive two through mail.
That's you, you're the bus driver?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, I just read you a letter.
Oh, well, I, I couldn't find where this was, I was up to town hall trying to break in.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I just read you a letter out.
All right, so, do you have any questions about why I think?
No, I understand what you're saying, I went over there and I spent a little bit of time, and I see what you're saying, so fifteen passenger bus, it, it isn't like a tractor trailer, so this is a fairly short bus. And the way I see it, is driving in, dropping passengers off on your right side as you go in, you're heading east going in, correct?
Yeah.
You're actually going north when you start going down.
Right, because we came, so, the overhang is nine foot, our buses are nine feet six.
So you're outside of it. So you pull up, and there's the ramp that you can go into the place, so if you keep going, yeah, after your passengers are off.
Right.
You drew a little sketch of it, yeah, right there. I don't know if you understand it, but. That's the canopy, that place there, that you, so if you drove past that, you could drive straight, you're driving right towards Ridge Road now.
Right, with the old exit once.
Yep, but now, that area is a huge area, I've never seen anybody even over there. But there's a big area that where you can pull up, back, and turn right back down over to shoot for that, it's quite a bit of room there.
And that, that's good, what I'm, you know, I've looked at their pictures, and I see blue lines and stuff, and I'm thinking, you know, what's gonna be left when this is all done? So that's the reason why I came forward, just to make sure that we have a space, because you, you really don't want to back a bus up, if you can avoid it, especially in a traffic or pedestrian area. And so, as long as they keep some space in that area where the old exit was, where we can back around.
That part, what you're referring to, is on the eye doctor's property.
Okay.
Nobody's touching that.
I couldn't tell from the pictures.
Yeah, no, that area is on accusate's property, so you can, you can be good, but it's quicker to wheel there. And when you're making your turn back to bus up, your passengers are already on there.
Right, but I'm more worried about the ones in that little apartment area that'll become walking up.
Yeah, that's, that's all, the whole area is, it's a huge black area there.
All right.
It should work out, but thank you though for your comments.
Well, like I said, I just want to make sure. Before we shut, yeah.
All right, anything else, anybody? Excuse me. I believe we have really, really good, more little designing building. Ingress and ingress, uh, primarily steering people as best we could, over to Schucreaf Road as opposed to exiting on the front, which is, signage is doing that. Anybody else, is that all? Other things are just engineering details. All right. Yeah, for the, we are in here for final approval. Uh, what do you see there? I already did, I gave a word, I said. All right, can I make a motion for a final approval? What do you think, go ahead.
Subject of the committee, yes. Subject to all applicable conditions. Subject to all applicable government fees. Subject to Department of Public Works approvals. Significant destruction shall occur within one year, as deemed by the planning board, expire around ten before twenty twenty-three. Conditions of preliminary final approval are depicted on the cover page of the planning design plans. Engineer, upon the project, you can find out a certification, all work is completed. As per planning for resolution, final approval. For support, you're back at the submission. Get the blue background.
Yeah, do you want?
On the credit, now, the project should be completed, the engineer has found out. Certification.
That, well, Scott, that is the second, that one point you just brought up, is something we have to stick with. Once the project is done, your engineer for that project, who said, this is where this is, and this is where that is, needs to verify all that, so there's, that money, however you guys work the money in, now, has to be where that engineer is, is supported at the end. In other words, where he does a funnel, a final inspection out of that, saying, everything is done according to what I drew on the drawings. Okay, just to clarify that, I'm sorry.
The all storm mark, so we just reconstruct it first. Towns, what, so you're gonna connect it to the storm system?
Well, we're, we're connected to the existing storm system, that, that pond in the southeast, but we're an independent storm service system.
Subject to resolution of final approval, that's. Subject to, uh, the sign language we modified is discussed. There would be no logo on the top of directional signs.
Just, just want to show that the red, yes, the red part of the sign.
And you're eliminating two signs?
Yeah, they, they've got six and seven, and number nine, a big yellow, is it?
Subject to. Who is your subject of drawing this?
The one, the one, the monument sign, I don't think it's.
You wanna, as, as far as the burns, I didn't put them in, you're showing them, but something's showing the height, they should be at least a minimum of, like, thirty inches.
So we did mash the burns that are out there, and it's, it's about three feet, so.
You did, all right, see, and that's what I want to make sure.
On the rating plan.
So the burns should be, the average of approximately two feet.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'll submit that motion.
All right, I have a motion in a second.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Pichon?
Aye.
Okay, you're on the road.
Thank you very much, thank you everyone, thank you very much.
And let's see.
Here, USA signage, located at eight eleven Ridge Road, the applicant, Premier Sign Systems, is requesting sign approval for one, six, square foot panel on an existing freestanding sign, and one, twenty-three point five, square foot building mounted sign, on a one point two sixty acre parcel, located in an NC medium intensity commercial district, under section one seventy-eight dash seven, in code of the town of Webster.
Laura Ronalds, Premier Sign Systems, for here USA. I'm looking to replace, they've changed the logo, so I'm looking to replace the base that's in the existing monument sign. And, then they have the old style here USA for the building, replace that with new style logo.
Everything's going back in the same place it was, you know?
Yes. Well, it has to on the monument sign, it's all about going into existing sign. Um, and then the other one is going exactly, what you see on your drawing, is going exactly where the old signs.
All right, um, it would, maybe you do that, yeah? Do you see that, you know? Is Jamie's there?
So, the lighting of the, the sign on the building? The lighting of the sign on the building looks like it's.
Based on letters.
And then it has a, feel a little red, wasn't it?
No, there is a panel that's behind it, that's what's holding it onto the building. Um, it's, it's, a channel letter, you know what the channel letters are, right, draw, bottom of the plaza, other channel letters, individual. So the logo is an individual channel letter, and then here, an USA. USA has a bit of a stripe mark on the face, that's part of the logo. And then there's a, a, like a metal panel behind it. So it's just all based there. No background light on it, because we have the drawers.
When the old sign comes down, does need to be cleaned up where that sign was before the new one goes up?
Uh, it depends, I mean, it's, the sign that's up there now, a lot of tanks will, like, power wash or whatever, if it needs to be cleaned up.
Okay.
Just depends on how tight it was on the wall.
Okay. You good?
Uh, town Webster Plenary Committee, request by applicant, Premier Sign Systems, must solve a six square foot panel sign on an existing freestanding, and a twenty-three point five square foot building mounted sign associated with here USA, on a one point two sixty acre parcel, having SPL number zero seven nine point one eight dash one, dash six nine point one one two, located in eight eleven Ridge Road in an NC medium intensity commercial district. The Plenary Board classified as a proposed action as a type two action, under section six seventeen point five C two, of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Second?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Pichon?
Okay, so I want to make a motion for approval? So I approve?
I'll make a motion for the here USA signage located at eight eleven Ridge Road to replace an existing square foot, six square foot panel on an existing, uh, freestanding, yeah, and a twenty-three point five square foot building mounted, mounted sign. And on the building mounted sign, they're gonna clean off for the, after they take the old sign down before the new one builds up. Here's presented.
Second.
Okay, and.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Pichon?
Aye.
Thank you both, sir.
Thank you.
Corona's Mexican Restaurant sign located at ten seventy-five Ridge Road, the applicant, Michael Hodgson, of John's Studio, is requesting sign approval for one, twenty-five square foot building mounted sign, associated with Corona's Mexican Restaurant, on a one point five ninety acre parcel, located in an NC medium intensity commercial district, under section one seventy-eight dash seven, in code of the town Webster.
Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Jim Gardner with Signs by John's Studio, and I'm representing Corona's Mexican Restaurant.
Can you put the sign up in the building? Is this lit, or is this?
It is not lit.
Just a sign up on the wall?
It's a sign.
It's going where the old sign was there.
That's right.
And where the old sign was, and Jan, Jan's thing there, it's, it's all cleaned up in there, so I was looking at it yesterday.
It is, all right.
It's all, it's ready to go.
Yes, with that one.
All right, um, no lights on it? New business? Are they run anywhere now?
Yeah, they, they've got several restaurants from Rochester area.
Really?
Under different names, and then they've got some in Michigan and some in Indiana.
Oh, okay.
Uh, there's another Corona's going up in Brockport right now.
Hmm.
Nice.
Interesting. Okay, anybody have issues?
Only four buildings. Isn't there a monument there?
I don't know if they're, I didn't bring, did not bring one out, and then I reminded the sign, it's already up.
We haven't, we haven't discussed that, but we know.
Okay, so this is all you're here?
Just, just for this one.
Okay.
The actual size of the sign, is it forty-eight or sixty?
Sixty by sixty.
Sixty by sixty.
Sixty by sixty, that was, I got.
Somebody crossed out sixty, it was forty-eight.
It's got forty-eight in it.
Yeah. But, but the application was for sixty by sixty.
Yeah.
And that's, I just wanted to show it on, like, sixty by sixty. Wanted to make sure it was sixty by sixty.
Well, sixty by sixty, yes, we're showing on the, on the photograph there. Does that still conform to the size of the check?
Yeah, they're, uh, quite under what they're allowed.
Okay, so if it's sixty by sixty, you put that into a resolution, and then if they make it four by four, the way this drawing shows, you're under, you're okay.
We, we did a, um, a temporary sign, we did a temporary sign permit, and that might be for forty-eight by forty-eight. And I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, that's, you have to get a sign down along with the windows, right?
Yeah.
It's not in that.
It's a banner.
All right, okay. All right, so five, it's five by five, all right. Anybody have issues?
No.
No.
Okay. You're secret right there.
Town Webster Plenary Committee, consider request by applicant, Michael Hodgson, of John's Studio, to install a twenty-five square foot building mounted sign, associated with Corona's Mexican in Webster, on a one point five ninety acre parcel, having SPL number zero seven eight point one nine dash three, dash one seven, located in an NC medium intensity commercial district. The Plenary Board classified as a proposed action as a type two action, under section six seventeen point five C two, of the State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Second?
All right, I have a motion in a second, uh, for secret, all the papers, if I can, all right?
Aye.
All right, and let's go, someone make a motion for the approval, for the site.
I'll make a motion for the Corona Mexican Restaurant sign located at ten seventy-five Ridge Road, for a sixty inch by sixty inch building mounted sign, which is not illuminated, here's presented.
Second?
Do you have a motion in a second?
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Pichon?
Aye.
Okay.
So, one question, our, our customer is, uh, they're ready to open, um, with this approval, can we go ahead and put the sign up, or do we have to wait for a written?
Oh, I think, probably just going to get a permit.
Yeah, what, what will happen is, I will, uh, fill this out for the remaining information, and our building department will get the permit ready, and we'll call.
Okay.
I'm sure that will be very much fun.
Okay. Thank you very much, all right, thank you.
Okay, good luck.
Ten twenty-four Shoemaker Road accessory structure located at ten twenty-four Shoemaker Road. Applicant David Valenzin is requesting preliminary final site plan approval, which includes a public hearing, associated with the construction of a nine hundred and sixty square foot accessory structure, on one point two zero acre parcel, located in an R two single family residential district, under sections two twenty-five dash ten, and two twenty-eight dash ten, in code of the town Webster.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm David Bobenzey, the homeowner.
Dan, you're building a really nice garage.
I hope so.
It's a different building. Um. Conforms to any change sets in the back, through his back.
He did receive a variance in his own work for the location. I understand that.
Yeah, well, how could, what do you need the variance for on this one?
Due to the size of it, it's considered an accessory structure, so the fifty-foot setback would apply to it. So we didn't get a variance. Because the applicant wishes to construct it in the same location as what it currently has. But that was pre-existing, so it's something that needed an area variance.
Oh. Alright. This is for your own use?
Correct.
Anybody any questions, concerns?
Is there water or electric out there?
Electric, yes. My pool is attached next to the garage, so I'm like, oh.
Mm-hmm.
Is there gonna be a room on top or a loft like that?
Yes.
But it won't be like a living space?
There's no running water, so I don't need to live there.
And it conforms, it's not taller than the house, right? It's conforming to what the code calls for, I'm sure you researched that. Alright. This is nice, you got a book. Like, is that basically the color we're using and everything?
Correct, it'll be white with black turn.
I know. I got it. Yeah, alright. Anybody, any issues?
No.
Alright, so he's here. Actually, this we can do preliminary final approval. Two separate. You'll go ahead and do.
Town Webster planning board consider request by David. What does I mean?
Bobenzey?
Bobenzey?
Yeah.
To remove an existing accessory structure and replace it with a nine hundred and sixty square foot accessory structure located at one zero two seven Shoemaker Road on one point two acre parcel having SBL number zero six four point zero two dash one, one five point one, located in an R two single family residential district. The planning board classifies a proposed action as a type-two action under section six seventeen point five C two of the state environmental law review regulations and therefore not subject to further review.
Okay, I have a motion in a second.
I think you said one zero two seven? Or the address that should be one zero two four? Answer.
Second. Yeah, one zero two four.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, say it all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Again, this is a public hearing, so I really don't see anybody here doing what kind of a. Is there somebody back there?
No, no one.
Alright, then we'll close the public hearing, anybody anymore? Any issues, concerns with it?
Nope.
Okay, so we all make a motion for preliminary approval?
I'll make a motion for preliminary approval for ten twenty-four Shoemaker Road accessory structure. The plan is restricted to one accessory building. The building is to conform to the size and location presented in the plan. Placement of the building should conform to all setback requirements. Or the, uh, the variance. The building shall not be placed near to the front property line and the rear line of apartment of the main building of the residence upon the block. No point in the building to be higher than the existing structure. No commercial use shall occur in this parcel. Accessory building shown used for personal use only is the plan of the town code. Significant construction shall occur within one year. Is deemed by the planning board expire around ten to four, twenty twenty-three. Comply with all requirements for the state, county, and town agency. All site will be compliant with standards of town Webster. Subject to engineering government approvals. Subject to all appropriate government fees. Subject to resolution of final approval, that's. And if it is for any type of residential use.
Preliminary, I'm sorry.
That is. No, that's, what are you reading on?
I'm reading preliminary final approval accessory.
Alright, preliminary, alright, and final.
Final is the same as preliminary.
Alright. Alright. Is that everything's in there?
Okay.
Okay. Actually. Did it beat the code? Personal use here. Alright, that's a motion in a second. Second. We have a motion.
Say, Mr. Malton?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Pichon?
Aye.
Okay, we can file it over.
Make a motion for final approval, accessory building. Ten twenty-four Shoemaker Road accessory structure. Um. I'm gonna read the whole thing all over again?
No, just make it subject.
Subjected, restricted to one accessory building. The building is to conform to the size and location presented on the plan. Placement of the building should conform to all setback requirements. The building should not be placed near to the front property line and the rear lines of apartment of the building, so residence upon the block. No point in the building to be higher than the existing structure. No commercial use shall occur in the parcel. Accessory building shown to use for personal use only is the plan of the town code. Significant construction shall occur within one year. Deemed by the planning board expire around ten to four, ten to four, twenty twenty-three. Comply with all requirements for the state, county, and town agency all site will be compliant with standards of town Webster. Subject to all engineering government approvals. Subject to all appropriate government fees. Subject to resolution of final approval, that's. And structure cannot be used for any type of residential use.
Presidential use? Okay. For personal use?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Second.
Okay, Mr. Malton?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Pichon?
Aye.
Hey, you're my son.
Thank you.
Good luck, yeah, you'll probably see Josh and you'll get yourself set up.
Nope. You're good.
Building permit?
Building permit.
Yeah.
Your final application this evening for the board?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, I didn't read it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll start with it.
Okay. The final application for the board tonight, the Meadows two subdivision extension of approval located on the south side of Schleko Road between Phillips and Salt Roads. Applicant eight hundred Phillips Road LLC is requesting a one-year extension of site plan and subdivision approval associated with the construction of fifty-five single-family homes on a thirty-four point eight acre parcel located in an R three single-family residential district under section two twenty-eight sixteen of the code of the town Webster.
Good evening, Mike Ritchie from Cox Engineering representing eight hundred Phillips Road LLC. I was here before this board almost exactly eighteen months ago where preliminary final approval was granted. As you know, the developer, Tom Hamis, has a lot of development in this area, one of which being Belleterra, which is currently under construction. You know, I think there's probably a number of reasons why he didn't get started earlier. Covid, price of building material, et cetera. That being said, we've worked through with town staff, the town engineer, the sewer department to address all their outstanding comments, who've sent plans to DOT, Health Park Water Authority, and based on the last few comments that were received from the town engineer on September ninth in her email, it was clear that they're in a position, the town that is in a position to sign the mile art post-construction. Tom had the ability to go to construction in the fall, but I think with the weather that we get, October, November, December, and the amount of earth that'd be opened, he thought it'd be best to just wait till spring and get started on the site work, get it all done and knocked out in one season to avoid any potential issues with erosion or increased cost through that. So with that, we're requesting an extension of the planning board's approval to hopefully allow us to start it in the spring. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Okay, this, this piece was separate from the duplex section, right?
Correct, yeah, this is, this is a single-family.
This is, yes.
This is like the Meadows along Phillips.
Yeah.
Same texture.
Same.
Yeah.
Alright. Nothing's changed there, right?
No, nothing's changed. It's the same.
It's an extension there. Alright, and again, this is published, I was telling you, this should be as a public hearing. I come, so we'll, we'll open it as a public hearing. And I'm not seeing anyone, we're closing it right here. Anybody, any concerns or anything with this?
When did the original, it hasn't expired yet, it hasn't been original proposed?
Well, the idea is to get it before it expires.
That's what I was wondering about the date.
Yeah, I don't know what the date was.
About Thursday, I believe.
What was it?
The sixth expires. Uh, the sixth.
The seventh month of August.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, others changed, and he's got, oh, please. He's got that surplus subdivision going on right now. So I can understand him, I'm gonna push this off a little bit.
Has that started over there, Dave?
Oh, yeah.
It isn't. Now, that's the one where we were talking about roads and all that. But it's got, are the people moving in?
Just getting buildings up right now.
Alright, we're just starting that, we're opening up. Alright, another topic, but, alright, anybody want to give a motion to? We'll give you a grant of about another year. I'll make a motion that the Meadows two subdivision extension be approved for a period of one year from this date, which is, we'll make it, what, October fourth?
It would be October fifth. It would be October sixth, or a year from November one does expire.
Okay, we'll make it that, you're right. October sixth.
October third.
Yep.
Second.
Mr. Pichon?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Jardina?
Aye.
Mr. Malton?
Aye.
Hey, give them another year.
Thank you very much.
Alright, anything else, any minutes?
We need approval for minutes from September twentieth.
I'll make a motion to the board, it's September the twentieth.
I have a second?
Second.
Second all in favor?
Alright. Anybody?
Good. Alright, I guess that's it for today, thanks for coming in.
Thanks, Andy.
Bring in the beer.
Thank you.
David, great, you see it.
I apologize for my thought, like, I wasn't talking to the sign. I thought we were actually entertaining, allowing some signs to have the logo and some not. And then it wasn't clear to me what signs we wanted to promote or key.
I think a suggestion would actually help everybody is sometimes you have to get a copy, or Josh, maybe?
Thank you, Josh.
You give everybody a copy of those guidelines. I spent two and a half years with that Roger Johansson and that crap. And we came up with stuff, and some of it, I would argue with him, but he went, you know, he was hands-on, he knew the stuff. And there's nothing, and looking back, some of the things, I remember Sunoco coming in, remember Sunoco used to have flames up all over? They had nothing, they don't have that, see? Those are the little things that you kind of don't see, but when you see them, yes.
Nice, Josh.
Yeah, because a lot of you do, and that's on the stuff there, minimizing signs.
I, I was like, oh, no, let's check it. I also, I'm passionate, people do. I'm very, I'm very, I'm very.